Our next is discussion items, and the first is to receive and file a presentation responding to a legislative directive related to ShotSpotter. Staff from the Auditor's Office have prepared a presentation as well as a report. That report is online, and I'll invite them to begin their presentation. Welcome, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Palmasano, members of the committee. Let me get our presentation pulled up here, and then we can begin. Oops. All right. Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Hawkins. I'm the interim Director of the Policy and Research Division of the Office of City Auditor. I'm here before you today in response to a legislative directive from May 31st from this group that requested an overview of the ShotSpotter program. I believe the language on this one, again, it was a little bit unique when it first came across through conversations with the original author, as well as just internally in our division, we wanted to kind of determine how we could best respond to this. So I do want to highlight, and I'll get into a little bit more detail in the subsequent slides, but, you know, our approach to this one was not necessarily to do a review of what other cities' findings were of ShotSpotter, but to provide essentially an overview of the approaches that were taken by other cities. Again, it's impossible to do that without covering, you know, what the outcomes have been across the cities that were selected as examples, but I did want to note that, again, it's a, you know, create some nuance with this. So, like I said, I'll speak to this more in a subsequent slide, but with that being said, before beginning any discussion about gunshot detection technology analysis, it's important to understand some basic components around how gunshot detection technology functions. I should also make it clear that, well, you'll see some terms kind of interchange between gunshot detection technology. ShotSpotter is a type of gunshot detection technology, so if you hear me, again, kind of switching between those or the abbreviation GDT, we're talking about the same types of systems. In general, GDT systems consist of a range of acoustic devices, including microphones and sensors. These systems can also be paired with remote camera installations, and the information gathered populates a database that's managed by the owner of the system. The database can push information or alerts to a partnering agency through emergency communications, law enforcement, or any other identified group. Now, we'll get into our examples of GDT analysis, review, and reporting. As I previously alluded to, in the interest of transparency, I want to provide an explanation for how these locations were selected. Cities were chosen to provide example analysis or discussions that may benefit the city's own exploration of possible GDT analysis and review. The type of analysis undertaken by any location reflects a range of factors that may be unique to that environment, including timing, scope, framework, and outcomes. The selection of the following examples is not intended to be received as an endorsement of a specific approach, nor does it account for cities where GDT usage has been adopted absent a larger public discussion or analysis. While this analysis provides examples from specific reports and presentations, these examples are intended to highlight the range of data points and review structures that were the focus in each location. Similarly, the ultimate outcomes of GDT programs in these locations has been provided to illustrate that analysis and review of GDT operation can yield a range of potential outcomes and next steps. Our first example from Portland highlights a front-end process that stemmed from an announced pilot program that raised questions from the city and residents alike regarding transparency and openness of the process that was being undertaken. This pilot was reviewed and ultimately recommended by the city's focused intervention team and community oversight group, albeit with a range of conditions around transparency and operating procedures. The city then elected to walk back the announcement and announce a more transparent, open bid process for potential GDT systems. This decision also allowed additional time to engage the local university for assistance conducting a resident survey on gunshot detection technology usage and adoption. While the survey found a majority of respondents supported GDT usage in their neighborhoods, there were also concerns expressed related to the accuracy of gunshot detection technology and the police department's ability to respond to an increase in gunshot notifications. Ultimately, in June of 2023, the mayor announced that the city was shifting its focus to alternative strategies such as a Portland ceasefire program. Our next example comes from Durham, North Carolina. In 2022, the city elected to conduct a gunshot detection technology pilot in a controlled geographic area. It was determined that at the conclusion of the 12-month pilot, researchers from Duke University would conduct an analysis of the program's impact and report back to the city on its findings. In February of 2024, Duke's Wilson Center for Science and Justice released their report on the results of the 12-month pilot program. It included a comparison of gunshot detection technology alerts versus corresponding 911 calls, officer time on scene for GDT alerts, any arrests or evidence that were collected as a result of these alerts, and any measurable reduction in gun violence. Following the release of this report, in March of 2024, the Durham City Council voted four to two to not extend the city's contract with ShotSpotter. Again, just to provide some context to the actual report, and also to in the electronic version of this, all of the reports that show up in the presentation are linked, if people want to review them in their entirety. But these were the following, the conclusions that were reached by the Wilson Center, and they've been included just to provide some example analysis that can be done on any review of gunshot detection technology programs' success or outcomes. So just to cover these quickly, they determined that ShotSpotter provided alerts to some incidents where there was not another source of notification. There were two, there were also two cases involving a gunshot wound where a gunshot victim was located absent a 911 call corresponding to the alert. ShotSpotter alerts were also published in 60% of confirmed shootings overall, and in half of the shootings that caused injury or death. For most ShotSpotter alerts, police investigation did not find confirmation that a crime occurred. That was also true of 911 calls regarding gunfire, although 911 calls are twice as likely to be confirmed as a ShotSpotter alert, primarily due to the individual that made the call, serving as a witness. ShotSpotter-only notifications during the pilot period were sometimes productive from an investigation viewpoint. It appears that in the target area, the response to 911 calls during the pilot period did not become more productive despite the quicker response time. ShotSpotter installations may have resulted in a small reduction in the propensity of residents that called 911. This is something that is a recurring theme across cities, which is, you know, if you install this in a certain location, do residents feel less inclined to then call 911, or do they, is there an assumption that this program is going to essentially take care of that for them? And then finally, they concluded it's plausible but uncertain that in one particular incident, rapid deployment due to ShotSpotter alert saved the life of a gunshot victim. Next, we'll go to Chicago. This was, this example was included to provide essentially, you know, an analysis that was undertaken by city oversight entities. This was the 2021 report from the city's Inspector General. So in 2017, Chicago Police adopted gunshot detection technology as part of a larger strategy to leverage technology in a crime reduction and gun violence reduction effort that was being undertaken by the Chicago Police Department. In 2021, the Chicago Inspector, Office of Inspector General released their findings in the report that you can see before you. They reviewed a range of gunshot detection technology alerts. Some of that included the, of the 50,000 confirmed and dispatched ShotSpotter alerts, 41,000 reported disposition, the outcome of police response, like, to an incident. A total of 4,556 of those, like, dispositions indicate that evidence of a gun-related criminal offense was found, representing 9.1% of CPD responses to ShotSpotter alerts. That point is highlighted because, again, it's something that we're going to see across a few of these, which is kind of recurring points of contention that exist from there being kind of like a lack of clarity in terms of what the goals and outcomes from an analysis are. Additionally, the report, and this is actually unique to this report, all of the other ones generally looked at, again, response times, if evidence was located, you know, what the overall reduction was. This one, and again, it almost seems like it was through happenstance, just looking, you know, like, in the process of pulling some, you know, some things together, they observed that there had been a few outliers and decided to look into this further. And so a part of the report actually goes into the impact that gunshot detection technology has on policing itself. What was determined in the report was that it appeared, based on language that was contained in police reports related to specifics of traffic stops, that the existence of gunshot technology in certain areas began serving as essentially the basis, one of the bases is, or bases, sorry, for pretext stops. In 2024, Sound Thinking, Inc., which is a parent company of ShotSpotter, issued a response to the Chicago report, and they noted two primary areas of concern. One of them, a false alert label, applying to any alerts where no physical evidence or witness was found to confirm shots fired, and the other being an incomplete analysis based on available data, which was something that was noted by the IG in their report, is that additional data being either made available or located would have been beneficial to them coming to some more concrete conclusions. In February 2024, Chicago Mayor announced that they would not be reviewing their GDT contract, and the existing system would be decommissioned in the fall. The gap between the announcement and the decommissioning was to provide time for the city and its partners to assess alternative or potential alternatives to gun violence Next, we have another example of, again, an internal review that was undertaken in the city of New York by the comptroller. This one actually is extremely recent. It came out in June 2024. They published their audit report. The specific focus on this audit was on NYPD's oversight and the metrics on the ShotSpot, their ShotSpotter program. So essentially, how NYPD or how NYPD was measuring the success of the program's operation in the city of New York. They reviewed, again, the correlation between gunshot detection alerts and the established definition for confirmed shootings. This, again, was another one where it became a point of contention between both the city comptroller, the police department, and ShotSpotter. But their definition was that ShotSpotter alerts are considered confirmed shooting incidents when NYPD recovers evidence such as firearms, ballistics, or video, or if there are any eyewitnesses, victims shot, summary arrests, or 911 calls that report a shooting. They also reviewed officer time on scene and its correlation with unconfirmed alerts, and then conducted a comparison of sensor placement in areas with the highest confirmed shots fired incidents. In one case, on the unconfirmed alerts, I know they found over the course of a month, I believe it was, like, 426 hours were spent in response to unconfirmed ShotSpotter alerts, again, based on their definition. And additionally, I believe the comparison of the sensor location placement in areas with the highest concentration was found to show a strong correlation. At the conclusion of the report, the comptroller did include multiple recommendations, as well as the response from NYPD, and then additionally, there was a memo issued from Sound Thinking to this report as well, which raised some issues. So just to highlight, one of the, declining to renew the ShotSpotter contract was one of the recommendations when it expires at the end of this year, of 2024, absent, again, a more thorough criteria for how NYPD evaluates the effectiveness of the program. NYPD did express its disagreement, just stating that non-renewal of ShotSpotter services may endanger the public, and not renewing the ShotSpotter contract until the department conducts further analysis would be a premature measure. Additionally, the comptroller's report recommended the development of more meaningful performance standards to verify ShotSpotter's accuracy, and in an effort to increase transparency, they should publish and collect more relevant data. The 2024 response from Sound Thinking challenged a number of points in the comptroller's report, including the very low rates of confirmed shots detected. Their concern with this methodology was that it ignores the realities of how criminal activity in police work. Officers will not always be able to locate direct evidence of a shooting that occurred, and then tracking relative response time. At issue in this example, how the city comptroller attempted a direct comparison of ShotSpotter alerts versus 911 calls by measuring response times for events that may not be related. Next, we'll go to Houston. So the process that was taken here was essentially just an increase in the updates and evaluation that were being carried out by the Houston Police Department, so the frequency with which they were reporting back to council on their program's operation, data on the program, and potential outcomes. Again, just highlighting presentations from 2021 and 2023. In 2023, again, 19% of published alerts resulted in offense reports, 99 arrests, 126 charges, and identification of 54 gunshot victims. One of the reasons that Houston was selected was because, again, this was a really good example of a disconnect between what success, you know, looks like and what the goals of the program, you know, like, should be for the city. These presentations were brought forward by HPD, again, and shared in a, I think, a manner that was intended to be very supportive of the program and to highlight the outcomes that they were reached. However, it was, again, there was a disconnect with how it was received. I think it was reflected in a lot of the questions that came up during these meetings in terms of, well, we're spending X amount of money, I thought we'd have more, you know, things of that nature. So, again, as of June 2024, the Houston mayor had announced their intention to end current GDT contract, which was intended to run through 2027. Lastly, we have Detroit. This is, again, similar to Houston. This was one where they had the matter of a contract extension in 2022. There was a prolonged discussion about the merits of, you know, extending the contract, what they needed to be, you know, getting from the police department to feel comfortable voting in favor. Ultimately, this was extended, and there were a number of transparency measures that were put in place around this extension. Some of these came from their Board of Police Commissioners and included language related to the use of gunshot detection technology for unlawful pretext stops, a lot of that I think stemming from kind of what was found or recommended in the Chicago report. And finally, getting into the identification of challenges and identifying, establishing a scope and framework for any analysis. So across all of these examples, there were a number of trends and themes that were noted, as is reflected, again, in the presentation and the report and the analysis itself. The first of these is just the importance for identification of desired goals and outcomes. This can include, again, emphasis on the importance of establishing clear goals. In a lot of these cases, it doesn't appear there was a substantive discussion around what the goal of any review was going to be. You know, so what ends up happening is you have a report come back that's going to be received differently across, again, the scope of government by residents, by, you know, parties that are involved. So, you know, it seemed like a lot of these, you know, a lot of work went into them, and they would have been better served by having that discussion on the front end to make sure that it was clear what we're measuring, so that when something comes back, you know, everybody understands what they're responding to. You know, and that, again, reinforcing kind of what is the purpose of these analyses, because, you know, other than just looking at them, you know, I think what that can do is, it can undermine the analysis itself, you know, not only from a transparency standpoint, but just making it appear as though any analysis is going to be, you know, justification for decisions that have already, you know, like, been made as far as to extend something, to, you know, to cancel something, whatever it might be. Additionally, defining success and failure. So, again, a lot like what the goals and outcomes you want are, you know, what does a successful operation of this program look like? The biggest example of where there's a large gap in this is if you look at how the police departments that are utilizing gunshot detection technology define success, and how, again, the elected officials, residents, whoever it might be, define success. Often, the difference there will, again, be if, you know, from the police department's side, what's highlighted is, you know, that we were able to do X amount more, or, you know, items where there wasn't a 911 call, but there was a ShotSpotter alert, and what was the outcome of that? Again, from the elected official and resident side, they're often, again, just citing the cost of the program per outcome as one of the concerns. Lastly, any analysis of the opportunity costs. So this one, again, I think this came out of a number of the cities in terms of what they were, but kind of figuring out upfront how these can be assessed using the data, so that it's, in fact, you know, again, to the extent that you're able to. It's driven by, you know, the facts and data of the findings as opposed to being anecdotal. There's always going to be that component, just because a lot of it is, again, you know, the perception and how certain things make people feel, but figuring out how you can support any of these assessments through data is extremely important. Again, just examples of the opportunity costs that we kind of saw assessed across cities from, again, Portland, Chicago, New York, like, you know, all the way through. I mean, there's the financial cost, which is, you know, that's the straightforward one. So we saw cities where they said, we're spending X amount of money, we're going to reallocate that X amount of money to the following, you know, alternate strategies. We saw other cities where it's the operational opportunity cost, and that's where you're looking at, you know, what the outcomes of gunshot detection technology were. You're going to see that argument come from, you know, again, generally, the, you know, the law enforcement agencies that are utilizing it. The societal costs, this is where, you know, we have the resident survey in Portland that I think fed into that. There's also, you know, there are ways to look at those types of things through data, which is, you know, does the existence of ShotSpotter in a location lead to an increase in pretext stops? You know, like, what are the other kind of unintended, I think, outcomes from implementing this in any certain, specific geographic area? And finally, identifying a framework and scope for analysis. Again, the creation of a framework that establishes a desired scope for analysis or reporting upfront is just, again, not only from a transparency measure, but just to ensure that everybody's, you know, there's communication with all of the parties that are involved in terms of, you know, what is going to be measured, you know, and why. So, again, just examples of review of specific case outcomes. If that's, you know, something that the city wants to look at in terms of, you know, for GDT alerts, what are we seeing as far as, you know, what is the impact of these? You know, some of the options are the collection of alert data, you know, in a specific window of time, gathering dispatch data for GDT alerts and 911 reports of shots fired to identify, again, any potential opportunities that may have been missed or would not have occurred absent GDT technology. And then connecting gunshot detection technology and shots fired dispatches with case numbers. This, again, is where you're getting into a deeper level of analysis, where you can actually see a case-by-case outcome for what happened. So, again, whether that's someone responded to a GDT alert and ended up, you know, conducting multiple traffic stops, you know, as a result, or, you know, officers responded to a GDT alert and identified a gunshot victim, recovered evidence, again, whatever it might be, but that's, again, like, probably the most granular level of analysis, is just, you know, going through the actual case outcomes. Again, next, we have identifying the impact on police activity, response time, on-scene investigation. So some options for this one, pulling from the examples that we used. Again, just looking at the response times for GDT alerts versus 911 dispatch when there were, when both existed for what can be determined to be, you know, the same event. Comparison of time on scene for GDT alerts versus dispatch reports of shots fired. Again, across these examples and just doing this analysis, I mean, that one's interesting because there's certain times where, like, the data seems to indicate that it leads to more time on scene with less recovered, and then there's data that shows the opposite. So I think that's going to vary based on, you know, each location and how well you define this upfront. And then lastly, yeah, just matching discretionary or investigatory stops related to GDT alerts. So, again, when an officer's responding to one of these, you know, what other action stemmed from this, absent just reporting to the scene of the alert itself. And then identification of the source of data and analysis. This one, we saw it in, definitely in Chicago and in New York, as well as the responses from ShotSpotter and the police departments, which was just, you know, making sure that you have a good understanding for what data is there or is available before you begin any review or analysis. In a lot of cases, you know, I think, absent some discussions that could have occurred between, again, law enforcement, Sound Thinking, the comptrollers, you know, IGs, auditors, external academic institutions, you know, like, they've filled in some gaps in some places, like, again, created some contention as far as, you know, the validity of the results. So I think, you know, going into this, knowing all of the data that's going to be available for analysis, like, it just kind of lets you fill out these other two bullets that much better. So that concludes my presentation, and with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you for this presentation. Is there any discussion on this presentation? I'll invite my colleagues even on committee to participate. We're using our flags to participate. And Councilmember Rainville is looking for his. Go ahead, Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a flag. Our wonderful clerks were not available. I should have told you I was coming. I'm sorry, Ken. I just, your presentation, I'm a little puzzled by, I know Chicago extended their contract, so that conflicts are what your report was. Maybe you want to pick up a Wall Street Journal from today and see, get the latest on that. So they, that contract is in effect in Chicago.
I certainly can. Again, the timeline for this one, this came forward in May. It was actually supposed to be turned around in one cycle, which wasn't ideal. And so, and then it subsequently got bumped out several cycles. Generally, what we'll try to do is, once we're done with something, because we get a high volume of requests, we have to pivot to other things. So, you know, a lot of this being timely, like the New York one, I'd love to have more analysis on it, but it literally just came out when we were doing this. But I'm more than happy to grab that and update anything and include a subsequent amended version.
Thank you. And then a second question, if I may, Madam Chair. How many cities in total use this in the United States?
I cannot remember it off the top of my head. I believe it's just under a five, well, just under 1,000 at one point. I think there's currently between, I thought it was between 400 and 700 right now, but that number, again, is changing, was people pick it up and people drop off.
Sure. So we could probably see examples of cities that, that use this.
Yep, yep, you absolutely could. And, again, that was one of the things I was trying to get at by prefacing how we selected the examples, was we, since the purpose of this was to understand kind of what options were there for any analysis and review, we had to identify cities that did the analysis and review. There's certainly a number of cities that are out there where, again, there hasn't been a extended public discussion of this, and, you know, as far as the operation, where it could be running, like, very well. So I did want to make sure that we accounted for that, to make it clear that we're not, you know, the selection of the cities was to fulfill the request and not an endorsement of any specific approach.
Thank you.
Yep.
Others? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you. Vice Chair Palmasano, thanks, Andrew, for the presentation. I always appreciate your really thorough, you know, investigation, but I will say, the speaking so rapidly makes it a little bit hard for me to follow at times, so, but this is really great information that's super helpful for us. One thing I did want to ask about is this kind of false alarm data, and my understanding of this technology is that it has improved a lot over the course of its existence, and even in the last few years especially. So do you have an analysis of when kind of false alarm gun detection technology data was collected and how that's shifted over time in any of these cities?
For the actual reports in each city, that was one of the areas where a lack of a clear definition creates some confusion. You know, you had New York where they kind of went up and essentially created their own definition for, you know, what constituted, like, a false alert, the same with Chicago. I know there were, there was, I believe there was a data leak around ShotSpotter a couple years ago that might kind of raise some questions on the accuracy of some of the locations. So I, that's something, again, I believe was, you know, was being addressed. A number of these did find that, you know, so much of it is outcome-based, as far as if they find what they're, you know, what they're looking for when they arrive. But, yeah, it's, in terms of the number, I think, I think that's something where, you know, having a clear definition, if the city's going to do any review, is extremely important because what you saw in a number of these examples was that, you know, what they classified as a false alert wasn't necessarily what the police department would classify as a false alert, what ShotSpotter or whatever gunshot detection technology company was in use, you know, would classify as a false alert, just, again, basing it on a lack of evidence that was recovered. So I think that that's something just to be really clear about upfront, since, like, the exact, that's the exact point, creates a lot of, again, I think, confusion across, across the board on these.
Thank you. Second question, this was from the first example from Portland. It did seem like, if I remember correctly, that they, they canceled their, their contract and pursued a ceasefire Portland program instead with the funding. Do you, can you explain a little bit what the ceasefire Portland program looks like?
That was one of the components. There was a high, I believe, community intervention, kind of the violence interruption approach with that, with their ceasefire program. Again, I don't know necessarily what the impact of it has been, but, yeah, the decision was made. And actually, in that case, since that was all, that was kind of given as an example of a front-end conversation, just when I talked about the timing, you know, being a factor in Portland, since this was, you know, in the initial stages, they never had a contract. They began pursuing one, and then there were concerns about it not being an open process, so they decided to open up the bid to other companies, and during that time, they did the community surveys, and by the time they got to the end of it, they had made the decision to go in another direction.
Okay. And then last question I have here is, like, general contract duration? Are there, are cities normally pursuing, you know, multi-year contracts, or is it usually one year or two?
It, it'll, across these examples, it varies. I mean, you have some cities where they elect to do it as a pilot, so they'll do it for one year. You have other cities where, as they're, you know, determining their next steps, again, they can bump it out one to two years. You have other cities like Houston, which, again, they announced their planned intention to go away from it, but the contract in its current form runs through 2027. So I think that was one where they had signed, I believe, a five-year contract. So I think the range of these is going to be another one of those items that comes down to the individual, you know, preferences and needs of a, you know, of a city.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks for looking into this.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I just have a question maybe for the chair. I'm more interested in hearing more about the NPD and how useful it is for...
That's next.
Oh, that's next?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the next topic of discussion. This was, and I'll say, I was under the impression this report was commissioned to offer options for independent, external ways that we could evaluate the success of ShotSpotter here for independent external ways that we could evaluate the success of ShotSpotter here in our city, right? And I know at the beginning, Mr. Hawkins, you did mention that this focus took a little bit of a turn. You also mentioned it had a really quick turnaround time, but then we kept delaying the ShotSpotter conversation. But am I misunderstanding the goal of this research project to be, I think the last two slides speak to how do we consistently measure? But...
Chair Palmasano, in response to that, I mean, I think what I'll say is, again, you mentioned the timelines and kind of, again, the shift in direction. Normally, how these processes will come forward, we have a chance to do the scope assessment and include all of those documents so that everybody's on the same page. We didn't have an opportunity to do that in this case. So again, and I think the byproduct of that is, again, some misunderstanding with what's coming back versus what was expected. As far as the identification, again, I think the goal that we wanted to accomplish with this one was just to essentially show kind of like what other cities had done, what options were there. So in terms of, you know, whether some cities elected to use an internal oversight entity, some cities elected to use external. In Portland, we saw them partner with the university to do their community survey in Durham. We saw them partner with Duke to do the survey. So just to highlight that this can be done through academic institutions, this can be done through internal oversight mechanisms. There were other cities that elected to, again, just kind of take the approach of, you know, more information and transparency from, you know, the users of ShotSpotter. But as far as, you know, just going down a line of potential vendors, I think that was something that we wanted to stay away from since we don't want to step into the role of, again, procurement or MPD or whoever is identifying the potential entities that could conduct such a review.
I see. I appreciate that, and I do appreciate you have a summary of results of how other cities have evaluated the program and rightfully pointed out that different groups might see the same results differently. So it's really important to have that framework as to how we go forward. I will put this out there, I think we should pursue independent evaluation of ShotSpotter as we move forward, and I appreciate the range of approaches that you've shown to analyze it. But as you note, there, there's no universal definition of what success or failure looks like here. I'm very eager, like Councilmember Osman, to hear from our MPD as to how they use ShotSpotter. I've known since the presentation back in February that how other cities do it is different. And I like your pointing out on the last page here about comparing response times for ShotSpotter versus 911 dispatch report of shots fired. I think we maybe have, while imperfect, an opportunity to do that comparison because we do not use ShotSpotter downtown, and that seems to be different than many of these other examples given. Because, well, I let them share their reasons for the report, but thank you. Are there any, oh, I'm sorry, Council Vice President Chuck Tai, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hawkins, Director Hawkins, thank you for this presentation and the, the report on, in response to this legislative directive. I really appreciate what you've outlined here today and the rapid speed with which your team was asked to turn this around. I just wanted to address a comment that was, that was made early during the Q and A period around what's happening, or early in discussion around what's happening in Chicago, which I think is, is an interesting one. And when I heard that, I just did some quick research on what is actually happening in Chicago. In, in Chicago, as you mentioned, in, in February, the, the city decided that they were sunsetting their, their contract with their, their gun detection technology contract with Sound Thinking, Inc., formerly ShotSpotter. And there was an attempt by, by the council to potentially continue a contract with, with their, their ShotSpotter contract in parts of the city, but that ultimately is, is not happening. Their, their contract is, is canceled. They are sunsetting that. That's, that's going to continue. And the argument that, that they're, that, that's playing out in Chicago between the executive branch of the government and the legislative branch of the government is over authority. It's, it's, it's like a political thing that they're dealing with. So just, you know, to be clear, Chicago is sunsetting their contract, as you pointed out in your slide deck, and it is accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rainville. And then I'd like to wrap up so we get to the next part of the presentation.
Sure. Andrew, could you please go back to that slide about Chicago, about what it says? Perhaps I made a mistake. It says...
The last bullet point.
It said, "It will not renew." The very last line says, "February 24, Chicago, it will not renew." So what I'm saying is, it's in, it's in effect right now. They did not, it's, if we went to Chicago, the ShotSpotter is activated. Because, right, and, and to your point, it's an argument between the city council and the mayor that hasn't been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any further discussion. Thank you for this report. I'll ask the clerk to please receive and file it, well, we just received. I'll ask you to file that report. Our next discussion item continues the conversation on ShotSpotter, and it is a presentation from the Office of Community Safety related to contract amendments with Sound Thinking, formerly known as ShotSpotter. So please go ahead and begin the presentation. Welcome, Commissioner Barnett.
Well, thank you and good afternoon, Vice Chair Palmasano, Vice President Chuck Tai, and other council members, Todd Barnett, Commissioner of Community Safety. And also joining me in this presentation will be the Director of 911, Director Hotney, and also our Chief of Police, Chief O'Hara. I want to start out just by saying that ShotSpotter does save lives. That part is true. If you, we're here today to present in three main areas. One is to present on how the city uses ShotSpotter. Two is talk about our proposal to expand ShotSpotter based on the data. And then three, just asking at the end, when this comes up for a vote, that you would vote for the expansion and vote for the contract.
As you begin, I also want to note that IT is in the room, and this officially, the official request for committee action comes from the IT department. So I see Bob Arco and Paul Cameron in the audience, and thank you for also being here.
So what is ShotSpotter? As you learned from the previous presentation, ShotSpotter detects gunshots. In Minneapolis, once a person fires a gun in less than 60 seconds, there's a person dedicated in 911 that receives notification. That person then dispatches the police to that location. That's it in the simplest terms, but also our officers have ShotSpotter on their phones, and so they are able to dispatch to the location as well. And in many times, when ShotSpotter is activated, our 911 dispatchers are dispatching our law enforcement officers before they actually receive a 911 call. And so I think that's important to say as well. The other thing that I would bring up in explaining ShotSpotter is that, just like in your home, you have a smoke detector. That smoke detector is there to alert you, and it alerts you that there's possible smoke or fire in your house so that you can react. ShotSpotter is when a gunshot goes off, it allows 911 and MPD to react faster and to get to a specific location faster. And I say that because I know that there's been some characterization that it reduces crime. That's not how we use it. We use it to alert us so that we can react. The, before I go to this slide, one, one other thing I, I should have mentioned, a couple of other things I could have mentioned about ShotSpotter in particular. It allows our first responders to locate victims faster, gives us a more efficient response because of the geolocation capabilities. We're able to collect shooting data to, on automatic gunfire and provide transparency to the public on what we're doing and how we're using this data, and also it aids in the collection of evidence that we might not otherwise have. So where is ShotSpotter and how, and, and then talk about where we want to go. ShotSpotter is only in a seven square mile radius, which is about 12% of the city. And Vice Chair Palmasano, you talked about downtown, a ShotSpotter not being downtown. Downtown is only about 5% of the square mileage of the city, but also what you'll hear is that because of the, the size of the buildings and where buildings are, it's hard to locate ShotSpotter downtown for us. So I think that's important to mention. What you'll see in this particular slide is that what we try to capture here is the coverage area for north and south Minneapolis, and that means that we're capturing 56% of confirmed shootings where ShotSpotter is currently located. 12% of the shootings occur in or near downtown where ShotSpotter cannot be located. There's an additional 32% of shootings that occur in south Minneapolis, and that is in an area that we do not have coverage for ShotSpotter. What we are proposing here is that that uncovered 32%, that is that we amend the contract and expand ShotSpotter into south Minneapolis. You can see in this map here, the red boundaries is where ShotSpotter currently is located, and where you see the blue is where we would like to expand ShotSpotter into Lowering Park, Uptown, Whittier, and Lynn Lake neighborhoods, because those are areas which we don't cover. And where you see sort of that, in the blue area, that red and sort of orange, that's where we're getting a number of shooting data from. And so at this time, I'm going to invite Director Hotney to come up and finish up the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Director Hotney.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Palmasano, council members. I know we're talking a lot about technology with ShotSpotter. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how the technology is used in the 911 center, which is a bit different than what you've been hearing about how the technology is used by the police department or out in the city in another way. So ShotSpotter technology has been used in Minneapolis since about 2007. Similar to how cell phones work by bouncing off the closest cell phone tower and triangulating that location, that's the same thing that a ShotSpotter using acoustic sensors to capture the sounds that may represent gunfire in a more precise location where the gunfire occurred. When it first started, ShotSpotter would send a sound file to Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center, and a dispatcher would have to listen to determine if the, determine if the activation was gunfire, firecrackers, or a car backfire. Again, similar to improvements in technology with cell phones, distinguishing the sounds and location of gunfire continues to improve. In about 2017, I did forget to move this forward for you, apologize. In about 2017, the sound was start, started to be sent to acoustic experts who could listen to it at an incident review center, and these experts with specialized training and experience could focus solely on the sound to help ensure that the events were in fact gunfire. That file was then sent to the dispatch center, and this entire process takes less than 60 seconds, often quicker than our own dispatchers were able to listen to that wave file and distinguish the type of activation. Beyond the ability to send officers to a ShotSpotter activation, MECC relies on the ShotSpotter technology to ensure precise location and accuracy. Location is the cornerstone of our operation. In our line of work, every second is not just precious, it's invaluable, and the ability to dispatch an officer to a location swiftly while gathering crucial information can often be the deciding factor in saving a life. This underscores the urgency and importance of our tools in the emergency communication center. When ShotSpotter activates, the first notification we get is a sound in the dispatch center that notifies us that shots have been fired. This rapid notification often precedes phone calls demonstrating the efficiency of the ShotSpotter technology in our operations. On the left, our basic information from our CAD system gives us a quick neighborhood information and housing addresses. On the right, when ShotSpotter activates, we can see a more detailed map of the neighborhood. This comprehensive map can aid us in determining if the shots are in a house, in front of a house, on the street, or in a larger complex. By human nature, when we call 911, they're often experiencing a crisis, and it's easy for them to panic and not remember an address or an intersection. Our call takers are trained to call the individual and gather crucial information, but this can take time. Some incidents go without having a 911 caller at all. This isn't just exclusive to ShotSpotter. We've had incidents of brush fires alongside the highway, car accidents, where people get down the road and call in and say, you know, about five minutes ago, I passed this, and by that time, nobody else has called in because everybody thought somebody else is calling in. Five minutes with a brush fire is a long time. Five minutes after a shot fired can be a long time as well. Here's an example of a couple of the cases that I pulled up just from this year. On February 14th, 2024, at 1:07 in the morning, ShotSpotter activated notifying dispatch of several rounds fired from a location on West Broadway. In just 10 seconds, the officers were dispatched to that location. Less than a minute later, the first officer arrived on scene, and with minutes, a victim was located and officers were starting CPR. Although police were on scene with the victim in less than three minutes from the activation of ShotSpotter, unfortunately, the victim shot in the head did not survive. There were no 911 calls. On May 28th, 2024, at about 8 o'clock at night, ShotSpotter activated notifying dispatch of several rounds on the southeast side of 23rd Avenue North. 28 seconds later, officers were dispatched to the location. The first officer arrived on scene, requested ambulance and rescue for a male victim with a gunshot wound to the head within two minutes of their original activation. Nearly four minutes after the ShotSpotter activation and three and a half minutes after police arrived with the victim, the only 911 caller called in from about a block away reporting hearing shots and someone yelling. Two small children, ages one and four, were alone with that victim when he was shot. The children wandered away from the scene, and officers safely located them down the block less than five minutes after arrival. Upon acceptance of an activation, an event is generated. These event numbers are monitored in both the MECC and the ShotSpotter system. The map, a key feature of the ShotSpotter system, automatically zooms in to reveal the crucial details such as the number and type of shots fired, did they come from more than one gun, and the movement pattern of, pattern of a shooter. It can let us know if it is moving at the pace of someone walking, running down the street, or driving a vehicle. Even if the initial report does come from a caller, we can initiate the call at an approximate location given, and with the aid of additional information from ShotSpotter, we promptly update the notes to pinpoint more precise locations. In this instance, we can see that two shots, I don't know if you can see the small two in the center of this, but two shots were fired from the front of the house in close proximity to the sidewalk in the street. When police arrive on the scene, after they've treated any victims on sight, we can help them discover the possible location of... them discover the possible location of shell casings with detailed accuracy. ShotSpotter is equipped with a measuring tool. We can guide them to look, in this case, 32 feet east of the front of the house, on the sidewalk, approximately six feet from the curb. With this detailed, even in tall grass or snow, the officers have a good starting point to locate shell casings that may otherwise be difficult to locate. And I'm going to pass this on now to Chief O'Hara.
Thank you. I think we'll have a lot of questions and discussion, and we'll save it for after the whole presentation is complete. Welcome, Chief O'Hara.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. So a lot has been said already. I have personally used ShotSpotter for years, both in Newark, New Jersey, and now here. So I can tell you, I got the presentation they want me to give, but I can tell you very, very plain terms like what we get out of this. So myself, just like the other cops in the city, when the ShotSpotter goes off in these areas, we immediately, before Director Hodney gets a chance to start typing into the CAD, I get a text message. These are just the text messages I've gotten from ShotSpotter in the last 24 hours. A lot of these are single shots. So for example, you know, one of the criticisms that I've heard repeatedly in these evaluations is there's no evidence of a shooting. Well, I mean, that ignores the reality that there is acoustic evidence that the ShotSpotter captures where we can hear gunfire. I could play some of these examples, and certainly some people that live in certain blocks in this town, they can tell you that shot's fired. And the shooting itself is a crime, like whether or not a person is shot, the weapon is used against someone, or so on. But in terms of collecting evidence, as of, for the first half of the year, there were 1,917 activations of ShotSpotter. Almost 40% of those were one round fired. So we're not going to waste a lot of time, if no one is shot, there's no victim, trying to find one single shell casing. So just to put some of this stuff in perspective, that's why there's no further evidence. If no one is shot, we're not going to spend hours trying to find one single shell casing, you know, somewhere in the middle of a roadway. Technology helps MPD better respond to shots fired calls. It's a fact that there's a whole lot of crime, not just in Minneapolis, but everywhere around the country that does not get reported to police. And there's been study after study that shows not every instance where a gun is fired is reported to police. This is something that's independent, that alerts the police within the coverage area when there is an instance that a handgun is fired in public. Somebody gets shot indoors in an act of domestic violence inside of a home, the acoustics can't hear that. So that's the other thing that's important. This is stuff that's occurring in public spaces out in the open. It more effectively helps us investigate gun crimes. This is stuff that doesn't show up easily, like on a spreadsheet. So for example, like I get notified whenever there's a shooting in the city from Joni's people. A lot of times, people show up at the hospital, so the notification I'll get will say 701 Park Avenue. Doesn't mean somebody got shot at 701 Park Avenue. It means that a shooting victim arrived at Hennebun Healthcare, and they were shot somewhere in Minneapolis. A lot of times, it is helpful for us to then go back and look at where were the ShotSpotter notifications, and that has helped us develop evidence of where the crime occurred. And I have an example of a murder where that is the case. Because, I mean frankly, sometimes people show up literally hours later after a shooting happens, or they go to a hospital in a different jurisdiction, and then we have to try and piece together kind of what happened. And it helps us develop an overall gun violence strategy. This is a tool, it is technology. It is not the answer to our problems with shootings in the city. There's been 226 people injured by gunfire in Minneapolis year to date, and that's something we all take very, very seriously. This is just one thing that helps us try and do everything that we possibly can to address that. And it is helpful in terms of gaining pieces of evidence that can hold people accountable for those actions. Provides a more accurate and reliable indication where a gun was fired than a 911 caller on most occasions. So, you know, I think we know, there's a whole lot of people who, you know, depending on where you live, gunfire is just like regular background noise. Not everybody's calling us, or they assume somebody else is going to call. I've been around guns, you know, for years in this stuff. If I heard a shooting outside, I couldn't tell you exactly where it's happening. I'd just call and say, I'm hearing something somewhere around here. And unless a person is able to see, like somebody running or something like that, oftentimes that's what we get. This thing gives us like a precise location. Joni showed you, Director Hodney showed you on the map, like it'll show exactly where the rounds were fired. And you actually can play the acoustics back, and let's say there's 20 rounds are fired. It'll show you exactly where each round was discharged, and it will tell you if the rounds were being fired from a moving vehicle, which is all stuff that's helpful in terms of, you know, collecting evidence. Allows us to collect evidence faster and identify shooters more quickly, increasing the likelihood of arresting violent offenders before they commit another crime. So again, this is a tool. You might be thinking, well, how does it help you identify offenders? By being able to determine a location where a shooting actually happened, that can get us much quicker into the right area to start talking to people, start looking for video, and hopefully recovering ballistic evidence that then gets sent through the ATF NIBIN, the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network, that can trace, you know, what gun that was that fired the, that fired the shots. Officers are more efficient, cutting time on call between 14 and 20 minutes. So another thing I've heard is that, you know, this makes cops more, you know, hyped up when they respond to these things. There's absolutely no evidence of that in the data. In fact, there's actually less enforcement overall in these locations where shots, where police respond to ShotSpotter. And quite frankly, again, with, you know, almost 2,000 activations this year, even more the previous few years, I get concerned at times that officers are responding too complacently because the thing goes off so often in certain areas. These are the coverage zones, and again, that's what I mentioned before. Generally, the police officers are assigned to calls for service for shots fired, someone hearing shots. 30 minutes to clear the call in the north zone, 22 minutes in the south zone. On average, outside of the area, they take 44 minutes. So it does enable them to clear the calls quicker. And if you think about it, it is logical, because if we're getting calls to hear a shoot, you know, one person thinks it's over there, the other person thinks it's over here, we do have to ride around and check to see, you know, if there's someone as best we can that might be in an alley or someplace in need of medical aid. The investigative valley helps us identify, find, and collect evidence available at crime scene to hold violent offenders accountable. I mentioned collecting the casings that are then entered into NIBIN and video that's available. Helps prosecutors at the state and federal level seek enhanced criminal charges to hold offenders accountable, isolate incidents of automatic gunfire. So there's, we'd know nothing about the prevalence of automatic gunfire if it wasn't for this, these acoustics that we have through ShotSpotter. And one example is, there was a location in north Minneapolis where the ShotSpotter was going off fully auto, you know, very, very frequently in one spot. There was never anybody shot there. It was up near Weber Parkway. Never anybody shot there, but the thing kept going off, and we couldn't understand why this thing kept going off. It led to an investigation, and a person was arrested and charged federally that we believe was supplying switches in the city, which is a device to enable a handgun to fire fully automatic. So that's just an example of a case, you know, we were able to make because of the ShotSpotter, but it didn't actually involve a victim of a shooting. ShotSpotter generates a whole lot of data that is totally independent of, you know, police reports, provides a fact-based understanding of gun-related violence in the city. It's just one additional way that we're able to measure kind of what are the trends and what is happening in the city over time in terms of gun violence. It helps develop smarter gun violence strategies, including focused deployment of resources and personnel, as well as community outreach efforts. Technology offers public transparency, informing the community in real time of gunfire incidents via the crime dashboard, which includes, again, calls for shots fired, ShotSpotter detections, as well as victims of fatal and non-fatal shootings. And some investigative examples, there's two here. The first, both of these cases are not fully adjudicated. The first one, the first one, the person's been indicted for first degree murder, and that's ongoing. And the second one, an individual pled guilty to second degree murder, but is not yet sentenced. So on February 21st of last year, officers responded to a ShotSpotter at 26th and West Broadway. While en route, officers learned that two gunshot victims arrived in a vehicle at North Memorial. Driver had been shot five times, the passenger was shot in the head, and was pronounced at the hospital. So I think we have, here's just an audio example of what the officers are able to hear immediately, again, before even getting dispatched to the location when they get the alert. So that's, that's an example of the audio that's attached to the file that again, shh, how do I even dance the next one? Okay, thank you. And again, that would show on the map as well. Let me see if I can show you. Joni had it up in hers. But I get the same thing that Joni showed you in the map, I get that on my phone. And then when I play it, it'll show me exactly where, within this bubble, exactly where each round was fired. So ShotSpotter provided officers with exactly how many shots were fired and the precise location of the shooting. With that, they were able to recover the shell casings that were inside of the snow and quickly obtain video from a homicide from a nearby business. The video showed that the suspect vehicle had unique features which investigators were able to identify and later find. This all led to successful identification, apprehension, and formal charging of both suspects for the crime of murder. And that's currently been indicted pending adjudication. Excuse me. So this is an example, like I was trying to say in the beginning, it's not stuff that shows up neatly on a spreadsheet. It's kind of, ShotSpotter brings us to the right location, we can recover ballistic evidence that can then get entered into NIBIN, and we can also start looking in the right place for video, which then can lead to something that we're able to develop a case from. The second example, on December 4th of last year, officers responded to a person being shot at 12th and Lake. Callers reported 12 to 15 rounds being fired from the intersection or from the north. A male was shot in the chest and died, and a female was shot in the leg and survived the injury. With the help of ShotSpotter, 36 total rounds were recovered. A more precise location assisted with obtaining additional video of the incident to include the shooter. Near the rounds, a glove was also recovered. Corresponding video showed that the suspect was wearing gloves before the murder and only one glove after the murder. DNA was obtained from the glove and matched the party that was later arrested. Thanks, Jared. Okay, so you can advance the next one? There we go. So because of ShotSpotter's precise documentation of where the shots were located, casings were recovered along with the glove, the DNA evidence became an integral part of the case. Person was arrested and charged with murder. With the evidence found at this murder, the same person was also charged with an additional shooting. So what that last sentence mean, with the evidence found at this murder, same person's then charged with another one? Again, that those casings get entered into NIBIN, they get traced, and a lot of times you develop, they call it leads. So you'll see, and it's not just here, it can be nationally, it could be in St. Paul, it could be in another state. You'll see a casing recovered at a crime scene in St. Paul, another casing recovered at a crime scene in, I don't know, Kentucky or someplace. You're able to link all of those together, as well as other guns that were at that scene. So at times, it can become, it can become an interesting like link analysis of kind of who's related, or at least the path of these crime guns and where they overlap. But in this case, it was relatively close in time, and the evidence was enough to charge the same individual with a non-fatal shooting as well as this murder. ShotSpotter's precise documentation of how many shots was captured, again, the callers thought it was 12 to 15, whatever. As you can hear, it was kind of fully automatic. Where they exactly came from, officers were able to find the exact location where the shooting took place and recover those 36 shell casings, again, buried in the snow. They also found video from nearby business that captured the murder, and video showed the suspect vehicle had unique features which the investigators were then able to use to identify and later find. This all led to a successful identification, apprehension, and formal charging of both suspects for the crime of murder. Without ShotSpotter, investigators would have no way to know where the homicide occurred if we would have not known, where the homicide had occurred. We've not been able to obtain the appropriate video footage that captured the suspect vehicle shooting the victim, and the case might not have been solved. So just again, you know, kind of to reiterate, almost 2,000 activations this year. I know another part of it, again, with this whole thing, when we don't recover any evidence and there's no victim, that does not mean that it's a false read. In fact, the system year to date, for the first half of the years through July 31st in Minneapolis, detected 64,232 incidents that were then filtered out to 1,917 ShotSpotter activations. So yeah, obviously, the technology has improved since the city first got it in 2007. But I would definitely stress that just because all we have is the acoustics recording of a shooting, just because, you know, we don't recover evidence and don't have a victim does not mean that a shooting did not occur. So that's my part of it, and I'm going to pass it off to one of our community leaders here who just wanted to comment on how we use it.
Thank you, and welcome. And if you could share your name.
Hello, council people. My name is Wayne Bug. I am the executive director for a local nonprofit, St. Vincent de Paul. Our mission is to serve the poor and needy. And so one of the things that we've done, we opened a thrift store in south Minneapolis on 12th and Lake. And so I grew up in the inner city, and I understand some of the issues that plague the inner city. January 2nd, 2002, I was in north Minneapolis with my cousin, and we hung out. It was the day after New Year's, 23 years old, everything was great. I left, and probably about four hours later, I found out that somebody had came and shot him and killed him. And I think to myself, what if there was a ShotSpotter? What if there was something to notify MPD or anyone else that this had occurred? In these communities, these shots happen so often. I was sitting in this back row here, and I don't know if y'all heard, but that heater is making a ticking noise. But only the people in the back row hear it. And quite often, in these communities, I feel like we're in the back row all the time. We're hearing these shots, and nobody's responding. And I know that this technology is not perfect, but I think we need a both and approach, something where we're being heard. These are not victimless crimes, even when the police show up and there's no victim. We are, I feel traumatized. So I'm working on 12th and Lake at this store, and so this last couple of years, they gave me this management position. And one of the benefits, I guess, is I get to go view the camera when there's a situation. And so over these last four, five years, I've gone in with MPD and looked at the camera as somebody's been shot through our sales sign and in the chest, and they lay in the street, and they bleed to death, there are shots in the window. And so, and some of the individuals that's doing these crimes, we do, we need them off our streets. I would love for rehabilitation of whatever the case may be. I would even really, you know, Allen Iverson, the basketball player, I don't know if you ever know. know, Allen Iverson, the basketball player, I don't know if you know who that is, he has said this term, we talking about practice? And, and today, to a degree, I mean, like, we're, we're talking about ShotSpotter? We're not talking about the shots? Why are the people in my community letting off rounds like this? What, what, what cause is that? Where, where is, where is the hope? Right? And, and doing an investigation in that, what's, what's, what's the, what accounted that? And so, I think when I looked up paper, they said this ShotSpotter thing is like a, a million dollars, and then, but when they said, looking at the city budget, it's like 1.8, it's like, so, so how much do we matter in that back row? And so, so that's, that's my appeal to you today, I thank y'all for caring enough to entertain this conversation, but it's, it's difficult to sit in the back row and feel like, whatever that may mask or fix that, somebody may come in here tonight and pour some water in the radio, I don't know what y'all, technology is, and they'll stop for a little while, but we appreciate the break. And I, and you know, and I'm, you know, I'm not in love with MPD, it's a working relationship, right? So, them showing up more, does not, I'm not fully convinced to that, that, that is the, is the best-case scenario, but the fact that they're willing to work, look, I, I, people's lives are in jeopardy, I have to determine sometimes, is it dealing with some rogue cop versus me bleeding in the alley, and nobody calling 911? That's my, that's my reality, and so, I want the ShotSpotter, give me MPD, and give me some other stuff to talk about the reason why these shots are going off in the first place, so.
Mr. Bug, thank you. We appreciate your very personal heartfelt stories, and your analogy to being in the back of the room is powerful.
Thank you.
Is this the end of the full presentation, then? Thank you, everybody who made this presentation. Is there any discussion on this presentation? I can put myself in queue, I guess my first question is really more for Commissioner Barnett. So, I will ask him, Commissioner, on that first slide, you said that this is not a tool that reduces crime, but I wonder, can it be? You know, violence interrupters in this system that you're building, we have the data of where gunshots are. In, in this part of our city where we have ShotSpotter, we have data as to where gunshots are. Is it possible to have violence interrupters and other kinds of de-escalators there and more present in response to the data that we have?
Vice Chair Palmasano, answer is yes. What I was saying was, some people characterize it as a crime reduction tool, as if it's going to reduce crime, just because of its detection of gunshots. And so, like Chief O'Hara said, is that, he's given you examples of where it's been helpful for them, and what it can do. It's a tool for MPD that's very useful. What I can say about using community organizations, I think that's what you've gotten presentations on, in different settings, from Director Amanda Harrington, about coming forward with a comprehensive plan, and how we do that work. And a lot of that, of where we're going, is going to be determined when we get the final report from NYU Policing Project, which council approved and that contract, and we're grateful for. So, thank you.
It's interesting to me how in the previous presentation, they talk about false confirmations of shootings, and I think what I heard the chief say, and I think what I read in the paper, that the chief said about ShotSpotter in Sunday's paper, is that he believes a shooting occurred, and, sorry, that a, that a gun went off, let me clarify that, those are two different things. If a gun went off, that's illegal, and I want law enforcement to know. I do not want it to lead to more pretext stops in a particular area. Could you or somebody, the right person, comment on whether us going to pick up several gun casings, or go and investigate after a ShotSpotter activation is detected, does this lead in our community to more pretext stops?
Vice Chair Palmasano, you know, I'll let Chief O'Hara have any input that he wants, but I don't think we know the answer to that definitively. I think the way that we use ShotSpotter, in the information that we receive, it's not linked up, I think, the way that, that you're describing it. But again, I think Chief O'Hara could probably, you know, explain about this more, I just don't think that for Minneapolis, that is true.
And I, the chief got up, so I welcome him to say whatever it is he wants to say in regards to that question. Another curiosity I have is, is our accuracy, and our location accuracy, that much better? Because we do not use it in the heavy concrete environment of downtown, versus we are putting this in different parts of our city, with a lot more residential capability? Like, it sounds to me like, as a technology, the tool is better in the areas that we have it, than in any sort of downtown environment. And I'm curious if that's been your experience in Mawa or here, Chief O'Hara?
Chair, so...
Sorry, Newark, not Mawa.
What was the place you said?
I said Mawa, I meant Newark, New Jersey.
Mawa, yeah, that's what I thought you said, okay. I'm sorry, so downtown is just not possible. And I, I don't mean all of downtown, I mean in the downtown core, where you have these, you know, very large skyscrapers. The thing works off of, you know, acoustic centers, sensors, triangulating the sound, is just too much echo, and not enough clearance for it to work properly in the downtown core. The expansion that was up on the map earlier, I believe it does come up through, like, Elliott Park, and into the first precinct, maybe Loring Park, I'm not sure, but the downtown core, like, in this picture, those big buildings can't work in that area. And then, so, relative to over-enforcement in specific areas because of ShotSpotter, in Minneapolis, the police spend less time on ShotSpotter calls, in ShotSpotter areas, than they do on shots fired calls. There is no evidence that there's any more enforcement in those ShotSpotter, on those ShotSpotter calls, than there is on the shots fired calls. And I think when we actually looked at it, I think the opposite was true, that there was actually more enforcement activity on the shots fired, shots fired calls, in the areas that are not covered. Which, again, in a way, makes sense, because you're kind of on a wild goose cave, if the only thing you heard is, I think I heard some gunshots, and they're coming from somewhere over there. We do have an obligation, again, to at least try and check, to see if there's any victim in need of aid, and to follow as best we can what a 911 caller is reporting to us. This thing is independent of someone's perception of, of what happened. So, at least for here, we don't have, we, we don't have any, any evidence of overpolicing because of this thing. At the same time, I just, I feel like this argument kind of, you know, it's kind of like the chicken before the egg. Certainly, there is, you know, this thing is deployed in areas where historically, there's just been way too much gun violence, way too much crime. And it's kind of like, you know, it's kind of like, areas that historically have been overpoliced and underserved, and I don't think that, that, I think that's the case regardless of whether or not you have this technology, you know?
Thank you, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, Vice Chair Palmasano. Comments more than questions, so this, there's a presentation earlier this year, I believe it was like February or March, from outside group about ShotSpotter, and how this group had been looking at, I mean, it felt like a dismantle of ShotSpotter, and that really worked the community up. So, I'm super excited that this presentation has finally been presented publicly, and folks get to hear from our staff and the team here in Minneapolis who work on ShotSpotter, who answer the calls to ShotSpotter activation. This is one of the, the issues in this city that I would say has really worked people up, like, a lot. I've heard from people all over the city, I've heard from people who visit the city about many things, mostly just the comfort they feel in knowing that ShotSpotter exists. And so, I've always felt like, if we're not going to give people an alternative, I, I don't think we should be having conversations about getting rid of something, and not explaining to people exactly how we use it, when, where, and what the alternative, the alternative to that is. And so, again, I just really appreciate the perspective of staff and of community on what ShotSpotter is expect, intended to do, and what we get out of using ShotSpotter. Some of the things I've heard from people are just about, you know, like, how police come and clean up a neighborhood after ShotSpotter has been activated, you know? I didn't really think of it until someone said it to me, but if you have one of these automatic weapons that we heard, there's a lot of bullet casings that go with that, and there are people who live in these neighborhoods, and people's children have to come outside, and I'm, literally in real time, I spoke with a family who had an incident on their block with a lot of shots fired. A young man was murdered in a car on their block, and they had ShotSpotter, of course, went off, and, you know, there were like, casings everywhere, there, I mean, there was just so much on this block, that folks were just grateful that there was something in place to get it cleaned up before their children came out to school in the morning. And that's just not the, the bullet casings, that's also blood and other things that come with crime scenes, things that police don't necessarily see, you know, like, right away, but the neighbors may see it, and they have the opportunity to talk to police and fire. So, I appreciate that. It, I mean, I've just heard from so many people just about why they supported ShotSpotter 20 years ago, you know? I've, I've heard people talk about a young boy who was shot in the city, and went and hid in a bush, and no one knew he was in the bush, and they found out about this technology that existed in the world, and they organized around bringing this technology to the city of Minneapolis. You know, for me, one life is enough to support something. I don't, I don't think that, I, I've never looked at ShotSpotter in a way that it was going to stop gun violence, but I have looked at it in a way that it lets us know where things are happening, that it's an opportunity for us to deploy violence prevention groups to places where crimes are happening, especially when, I mean, communities that I represent, sometimes there are ShotSpotter activity multiple times a day, you know, like, so many times in one day, that, you know, it, it goes off, and I get a call from my inspector saying, Councilmember, we're deploying all of our resources to this area because ShotSpotter has been activated this, many times today, and there's comfort in me being able to tell constituents as they reach out that, okay, we, we know that this has happened, you know, ShotSpotter has picked up on this activity, and so, there are extra patrols in this part of, you know, the neighborhood, or there are resources that's going to be deployed over there over a period of time. And, and so, my, my, my biggest issue is just like how folks were made to feel fear that the council was just going to remove something from the city, and I, I mean, I hadn't even heard that something was up, and it really wasn't. It is now, and I, and I really do hope that we keep this technology, especially because we're dealing with a crisis in the number of officers we have on the street. We, we're dealing with so many other things that, I really appreciate having technology as our friend. And I'll, I'll end with, lastly, I've probably been to like five ShotSpotter calls over the years of, as I've done ride-alongs with police, and I've never went on one in the morning, I've always went at night, and it's kind of scary, when you get somewhere, like, at night, you just know a shot went off, and you don't really know where, and then they tell you exactly where it went, I mean, they can go directly to the place of where it went off. I mean, you get there, and neighbors, one neighbor heard 20 shots, one neighbor heard firecrackers, one neighbor, I mean, there's just, when you talk to people, you just hear so, people have just very different accounts of what happened, where it happened, the timing of it happening. I've talked to officers about just like not even having a 911 call, but the ShotSpotter went off, and, you know, like, we, we went to go see what was happening in this place. So, again, I, I, I find it useful, there's a sense of safety for people in the community that I represent, that this technology exists, and I really do hope we keep it and look at future options for us, if it's something better. I think we all want it better, if, if there is something better, but I also want people to have what they feel they need, if we can, if we have the ability to provide it as a
Thank you. Just to be, to clarify for you, Councilmember Vitale, it was March 11th that we had that presentation?
Okay, thank you.
From Campaign Zero. We have in queue Vice President Chug Thai, followed by Councilmember Ellison, and then Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief O'Hara, I'm glad you're up here, my questions are for you. I've got a couple of, of things I wanted to, to ask some questions about. The first being, the, the number that you used, it was 1,917, and that is a number of shootings with corresponding ShotSpotter activations, or something else?
Chair, Council Vice President, 1,917 activations year-to-date through July 31st, so...
Activations only, yep.
Yes, activations of reported gunfire in the city, and that was out of 64,232 potential incidents that it detected. So, when the thing first started, and I, I don't, Joni probably knows what year it switched over, but when it first started, all those, all those 64,000 activations, they would, the phone would ring here, and someone here would have to listen to it, and then determine whether or not that was gunfire. A number of years ago, the company centralized it, so anywhere in the US, the thing goes off, there's a group of people that listen to it, they make that determination for us, and then instantly, we get notified. So, that's, that's something that's different about it.
And then, that, that sort of fact-checking of the, the sound, those, the experts, that's not some, that's not work we have to do, the company does that?
Chair, Council Vice President, Minneapolis used to have to do that, we don't anymore, and I don't know when it switched over, but it does require human verification.
Awesome.
And it is still not 100%, but it's significantly more accurate than what it used to be.
For sure. Now, of those 1,917 ShotSpotter activations of reported gunfire, in your, in your section of the presentation, I feel like I got a really, a far more clear picture of, you know, what are the next steps that, that you take, that the department takes, and what are the different ways in which it cuts down time, aids, or cuts down response time, aids in the completion of investigations? And, and I found that information to be incredibly, incredibly enlightening, in, in what the, the value add of, of technology like this can be. So, I'm curious for, for the, for, for the 1,917 year-to-date as of end of July activations, can you tell me about how many, like, what's the status of the, the corresponding investigations? What's the clearance rate of those investigations? Have they been completed? Like, have, what can you tell me about the biggest value add that ShotSpotter, I think, provides?
Yeah, so, Chair, Council Vice President, I can tell you, and I don't know, so that was as of July 31st, I know as of last night at midnight, there were 226 victims of shootings, people had been hit by bullets. They did not all occur in the ShotSpotter zones, and they did not all occur outside. So, that would take some digging into the data to try and figure out. I can tell you, though, when we're talking about, because you mentioned response time, one thing that's not going to show up in any of these things is, I get, I get the text message, and I see, the last one I got was 4:43 in the morning, one round at 3911 Dupont Avenue North. And again, that, that represents about 40% of all, all alerts is a single round. Thankfully, no one was injured in this incident, but if we're talking about response times, if I'm working that district, and I get the alert on the phone, and I start driving there before the person in Joni's shops gets a chance to type it into the computer, that's a decrease in response time that is just not measured, you know? not measured, you know? So.
I don't, yeah, so just to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think what I'm trying to understand is what was, what's the impact on investigations, right? Because this technology provides us, provides the department with a granular level understanding of where the, where a round was fired, how it traveled, when there are multiple, what direction it was headed in. Is there, I understand exactly what you're saying there. So what did it do to investigations that, that were conducted into these 1,917 instances? I understand you can't answer the question right now, but I'll note for clerks that this is something that we should get some administrative follow-up on so that we can better understand that. And, and I think, you know, to the extent possible, it'd be helpful to get comparison to, you know, the vast majority of the city that isn't covered by, that doesn't have that, the ShotSpotter infrastructure, you know, how long does it take to complete an investigation compared to how long does it take to complete an investigation in an area where there is ShotSpotter coverage?
So Chair and Vice President, yes, that would take actually going through individual case files and trying to figure out, like the two examples that we gave, were we able to develop evidence that we otherwise would not have gotten? And then because of the evidence in one case, we were able to close out another shooting. So again, it's just not, it's not something that's just like tracked in a spreadsheet, like.
Totally understand.
So, yeah, I'd have to ask the analysts, you know, how we could follow up with that to understand that better.
Great.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And I think one other thing I would add though, Chair, is, you know, these things don't look at kind of, it's easy to say there's correlations with stuff, like these two things are happening at the same time. Another thing that just isn't in these spreadsheets that I think is more important than closing stuff out is what else will we be doing because we get there? And, and the officers here, I have seen dozens and dozens of times, put chest seals on victims who were shot, put tourniquets all the time on people who have, you know, injury, shooting injury to one of the extremities that is very clearly something that helps save people's lives. I don't know the extent to which, you know, getting there a little bit quicker and doing that makes a difference, but I would imagine, you know, maybe we could talk to somebody either at North Memorial or at the hospital downtown that could give us a better understanding of that. But I just know that has to have something to do with it. And I do know if you look at kind of when the shootings here went through the roof, like half of 2020 and then 2021, 2022, there is, there is a greater survivability rate here than you, what you would see in other major U.S. cities. I don't know what the answer is to that. I think if you look at most major cities, you probably have one fatal shooting for every four non-fatal shootings. I think it's 2021 that were well over 600 people shot. And with the number of people shot like that, you would expect it to be way higher fatal shootings. And I've, I've talked to some people that study this stuff around the country. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying this has to, some combination of what's happening must have something to do with it. I don't know what the answer is though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone is arguing or asking for further data on what, what is rendering first aid in the scene to a gunshot victim helpful or not. I think we would all agree that that's generally a good thing and something that we want to see happen. And a value add, for sure. No one's arguing with that. My, my second question was, you know, I, I think it was the, the chair that asked at the beginning of the discussion here around, you know, how can we use ShotSpotter data to then pair our, our investments in, in violence intervention? And I think that's a, that's an important question to be asking and a conversation we should be having with the Office of Community Safety that's sort of overseeing all of these different arms of, of our safety ecosystem and infrastructure. I think what I would just say though is that the, the boundaries in our city, the geographic area in which, where, where ShotSpotter infrastructure exists, those are communities that also have some of the greatest investments in violence intervention and interruption as well. So it's not like those two things are fully unrelated right now and could, could be related to one another at some point in the future. So I just, I want to name that, like, that's where, that's where we do most of our investment in violence, interruption, and intervention, with downtown being the major exception. And then, of course, the, the chief has explained a couple of times now why downtown is, is not an ideal location for, for ShotSpotter infrastructure. That's the end of my questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few sort of observations and then maybe a few questions about the contract itself. And I think, as you mentioned, that, that'll probably be directed at IT. You know, I, I think that we get this technology, we get these tools that we have that we're able to access, and I think that we grow an attachment to them and, and maybe even a little bit of, get a little sentimental about them and we're just kind of making the case for why we need it as opposed to, as opposed to actually just taking a lucid sort of look at the landscape. What is this tool doing? What are we achieving with it? How are we succeeding with it? Where is it falling short? And I think that's where I really want this conversation to be. It's not a conversation about whether or not we're going to have ShotSpotter. I think it's a conversation about what is our investment yielding us? And I'm sure that there are a lot of intangibles which I think are worth us having conversations about, but the tangibles matter too because, you know, that's, that's how we evaluate, you know, these things have a price tag. It's not, we might get a set, we might develop a sense that they're invaluable, but they do have a price tag on them, that we know the exact value. And so I, to, from my vantage point, I think one of the things that I'm having a difficult time reconciling is that we've had, you know, one, we had one presentation that maybe had a bit of an angle, right? That was the one a couple of months ago, that feels like ShotSpotter's not a worthy investment for cities to be making. We had another, we had our presentation earlier today that talked about some of the pros and cons. And then we get this presentation from the department that says that, at least how it's landing on me, just sitting here listening, is that it's perfect, it's invaluable, like we just, that, that's, that's all there is to it, we need it. And I think that I'm having a difficult time trying to reconcile all those things. It seems like that if there are other municipalities that are questioning the efficacy of this, the cost of it, you know, where they can be putting other investments, that it, that it makes sense that we would also have this conversation as well. I have heard from a lot of folks in North Minneapolis, you know, if, if metaphorically we're the, we're the folks at the back of the room, you know, myself and Councilmember Vitale do represent the folks at the back of the room. And the folks at the back of the room aren't a monolith, they've got varied opinions on this issue specifically, right? And, and other issues as well. And so, you know, I'm interested in understanding what our built-in evaluations can be, and I'm also interested in understanding how long this contract is supposed to go, because I feel like having longer contracts could undermine the, the spirit of evaluation. If there's, if there's going to be evaluation but no real opportunity to, to walk away from the contract if we feel like there's something better for us, better for the city, or if we feel like the cost can't justify the, the product. And so those are two of the questions that I, that I would have.
So Chair and Councilmember, I'll try my best to answer some of that. It's not perfect, and if my part anyway implied that, no, it's obviously not perfect. I tried to show, like you said, what are we doing with it? Like, to show like what, what do I get out of it is, as a police officer here? You know, obviously there's just, there's no way to quantify, you know, the suffering that happens in some neighborhoods you represent because of gun violence. And I did my best to try and give some tangible examples of how it at least helps us get some sense of justice for people. But it does feed into the overall strategy. It is not perfect. There is more that could be said about it. I don't know, depends where you want to say this is valuable or not. The thing has been used before where people have shot at each other. And it's been at times the only thing that was able to tell who shot at the other person first. That is something that's valuable in court. It's been used independently to, to bolster, like, sometimes if we only have one witness to an incident.
I don't want to cut you off, Chief. I, I don't even.
I'm not answering what you asked.
No, no, we're a little, we're a little off. I'm, I'm not looking to be sold ShotSpotter, right? I'm convinced that this is a tool we need, but I'm also convinced that this is, that it's not a perfect tool, that it requires evaluation. I'm just kind of wondering, what does evaluation look like? What's the terms, what are the terms of the contract as, as, as they stand now?
Commissioner.
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Ellison and other council members. So what we have started to do is to reach out to some of our educational institutions to see if there's interest in evaluation. We're not there yet, Councilmember Ellison. We thought it would be important to try to find more of a neutral entity that could evaluate ShotSpotter. And part of that is we want to know some of the questions that you're asking, because if, if in some way ShotSpotter is increasing disparities or, or making things worse in any particular community, we would want to know that as well. And so that's something that, that we have started to look at. And right now, I don't have an answer for you, but just how would we write an RFP for that and what would we do? Or if there are there opportunities for us to partner with an institution that would do it for free? Or is there philanthropic dollars out there for us to do a study? So those are some of the things that we're looking at.
And what's the length of the contract that, that is planning to come before us?
I believe it's three years.
Three years? Okay. I, I think that, you know, a three-year contract for when it comes to evaluate, well, a couple of things. One is if we're talking about the need for evaluation and all we're hearing is the value add, how much we need it, personal anecdotes, that, I might believe all of what I'm hearing, but it does make me question whether or not evaluation is going to be, and being critical is going to be a real part of that equation if everybody's just like, oh my God, we need it. All right, well, it doesn't really sound like evaluation's a part of, of our analysis here. And the other thing is that if we're going to develop a mechanism for evaluation, you know, my experience in this institution is that, you know, too much urgency can be bad, but not enough urgency can also be bad. So if we're building in three-year timelines and we don't even have an evaluation mechanism set up yet, I think that we can all plan, that we can all bet on 2027 being the time where all this stuff magically comes to fruition and not a minute before. And so, you know, that's the reason I'm asking this question about the timeline of the contract, because I do think that if we've got a longer contract or if there's, or if, or if it's, you know, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's longer than a year, a year and a half, then, then, then we're kind of undermining any potential to create this system for evaluation. So that's why I've asked about the, the terms or the length of the contract. And I know that all of our contracts can, sometimes they're just flat contracts, sometimes they are an initial option with years to extend. And so I'm just kind of asking, you know, just looking for, trying to help myself wrap my mind around what this contract looks like on paper as well.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And is IT here to speak, able to speak to that at all?
Director Cameron, or actually Mr. Arco. And I'll point out that the contract goes through March 21st of 2027, so two and a half years at this point. I appreciate what you said about sometimes a little too urgent. I think that's what we heard from Mr. Hawkins and saying, trying to put forward a full framework was a bit rushed on his part because he was supposed to get it done in one cycle. Mr. Arco, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Bob Barco, Director of Vendor Management and Contract Services for the IT Department. The contract does go through March 21st of 2027. It was extended through the, the Fifth Amendment to that contract. And so the ask from IT, OCS, 911, and MPD is to keep that term of the contract, increase it to allow payments for the, the seven-mile coverage area that we currently have today, and then increase it for that two-mile, square mile expansion. Can I answer questions about that?
Yeah, yes, please, thank you. That's really helpful. If, if the council was to decide that, you know, we, we appreciate staff's recommendation, but we think that those terms are too long, we think it should be a one year or a year and a half, with the option for another year or, or additional year or two, you know, is that, is that an amendment we could make from this diocese or is that something we'd have to go back to the company with and further negotiate?
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Ellison, I believe that in the contract, there is a termination clause that allows us to provide notice of termination of the contract. We have to go back and review what that specific term is, but it is standard in every city contract that we have that ability to do so.
You're saying complete termination? I'm not, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is kind of a question that comes up from time to time with contracts and vendor agreements that are proposed for council approval. The council doesn't, at the meeting on the fly, have the ability to change a contract, a term of the contract, an essential term like, like the length unilaterally. We would have to go back, evaluate the terms in the contract regarding extensions and also have further discussion with the vendor.
That, that answers my question, thank you. And I think those are all the questions I have regarding the contract. You know, the, the last thing I'll say is that, you know, this is, as much as we want to see a lot of tools used here and as much as I think this is going to continue to be one of them until it's properly evaluated or until, or until there's an alternative, I also want to make sure that we've, we have, that there's enough lucidity around what this, what this discussion is and that we are, and that we are able to be a little objective in how we evaluate the tools that are in front of us, no matter how attached to them that we are. There was a comment that, you know, this tool isn't subject to human perception, but also, you know, there was also a comment that said that I believe that there are shots even when there's no evidence of shots, right? That's human perception. That's human perception imposed on the technology. And so this technology is not safe or protected from human perception. And so I, I want to make sure that we can evaluate that, that we can understand that about the tool and that, and, and that we can be clear about and distinguish between what the evidence is showing us, what the data is showing us, and, and what we're sort of choosing to believe as a matter of, you know, dogma or principle, right? There is a difference between those two things. And so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I think this is a needed tool. I've heard a lot of important things from folks in my ward about why they're, why they're in favor of us continuing to have a tool like this. But whether or not this is the tool, kind of, kind of, as long as we have something that can approximate this, I think that we should all just sort of maintain, you know, whose, whose logos on the technology sort of shouldn't matter. It's, it's about whether or not this tool is efficient, if it's, if it's efficient and if it's the best thing for the amount that we're paying for it. So that's all.
Thank you. Last but not least, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, you know, all the community safety staff and Chief O'Hara and Director Hadney for a really thorough presentation. I think we got a lot of really great information, information today. And it, it did feel like this information should have been coming forward months ago as public discourse was going on about this contract so that we had baseline understanding of how it's being used and what the impact is and what the value add is. So I'm glad that we're here in this place now. And I did wonder if, you know, either Mr. Jeffries or Commissioner Barnett, if you could actually come back to slide five, the proposed expansion map. So this expand, proposed expansion is proposed to come into Ward Seven, Ward Seven, Ward Ten, and Ward Six. And so I really want to understand and be able to talk to community about what they can expect here. And, you know, that big red circle is, is my block. I mean, that's where I live, so I'm very familiar with gunshots going off and probably no one even calling them in, right? Because they think someone else will or they, you can't really tell how far away it is. And so I do think that we do need more resources in this area. And I think expanding our coverage map to be covering an area that has a lot of shots fired is a very data-driven approach to, to our work. And I'm wondering if you can speak to like the red, red flags that are on this map? There's even some that are outside of the border, like on 28th and Hennepin. What, is that where the sensors will be placed and what can the community expect to see with where these red flags are? to see with where these red flags are?
Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Cashman, I think what you are calling a red, do you have the-
Yes, I have it right here. So-
And I, I think what you're calling a red flag is actually where the shootings have occurred, because I think it's showing bodies and not a flag.
Okay, so this is directly from the shots fired dashboard? The little flags there? So those are fatalities?
That I can try to confirm, to make sure for you. Yes.
Okay. I think there are nine, as far as the, the MPD shots fired dashboard, I think that there are 911 confirmed calls. Okay. We can definitely follow up about that after so that I can, you know, explain this map. But I, at this point, am hearing from a lot of community about what are we doing to address gun violence in Loring Park, in Stevens Square, Loring Heights, in Uptown. And the data that's shown on this map shows a real need for extra attention, extra services. And I did want to say, you know, Loring Park is a downtown neighborhood, so there is another question here for me about the validity of the data in Loring Park, given that there are high rises in the area that's proposed to be expanded into.
I've been educated and can give you a quick answer-
Okay.
-in less than 60 seconds for you. The data that you see is from the last two years, from January 1st, 2022, to April of 2024. The red that you see there, bodies are fatalities, and the blue that you see are ShotSpotter activations. And Councilmember Cashman, if you want to meet, and someone from our staff can go over it with you.
Yeah, thanks. I was able to meet Jared on Friday. Thank you for that. But I did, you know, did want to ask about this Loring Park dynamic because of, this, this is a downtown neighborhood, Loring Park is a downtown neighborhood with a lot of high rises. And, you know, it's been stated that the technology's not as effective because of the echoes of high rises. Is that something that you analyzed in this proposal of how to address-
I mean, specific-
-potential false-
I'm sorry, to cut you off.
No, that's great. Thanks.
This, so Chair Palmasano, Councilmember Cashman, this is a proposed area, is one in which we believe that we could expand ShotSpotter. And downtown, downtown, that downtown corridor, because of the way the buildings are located, makes it difficult for ShotSpotter to be there. Think you've heard Chief O'Hara talk about that, just that those locations of those buildings and what have you, and the echo makes it one in which we can't have it in that area.
Yeah, no, I understand. But, you know, the area going all the way north to Grant Street on this map, that is downtown. Like, that Loring Park is certainly downtown, buildings going up to 20 stories. So I'm just wondering how we mitigate the potential false alerts that could arise in the Loring Park neighborhood?
That is not in my wheelhouse. Like I said, if we can chat about that, we can get those answers for, for you, from those experts that know exactly about locations and echoes and the size of those buildings that are there, if you want further information about it.
Okay. I would, I would request, then, maybe a standardized definition of false alert, because that is one thing that Director Hawkins mentioned was something that cities really struggle with being able to define. But how are we, as a city, going to define that? And, and then how are we gonna mitigate potential false alerts in, in the Loring Park neighborhood, in high-rise neighborhoods? You know, that could be an administrative follow-up for us to discuss, you know, in the next week or two as we're debating this contract.
All right. So Chair, Councilmember, just quickly, we have identified both false alerts at times, and also we have identified some instances where it was, you know, a missed, a missed alert, where it was not categorized as a shooting. However, we did have a victim, so then they have to go back, they listen again, and they locate it. We have had instances of both, very, very few and far between. But that's when we have evidence. So, for example, there was somewhere up on the north side, a factory or something up on Lyndale, way up, that something industrial, a, a noise was happening that was causing this thing to go off as a single round. They were able to realize that's what it was, contacted the company, and they were able to correct it that way. So things like that have happened, as well as at times where it missed gunfire. But that's a, that's a really, really small percentage. Again, 40% of these things are single rounds, and we're not spending a whole lot of time trying to find one single casing if nobody is hit and there's no victim or no person telling us. They saw someone point a gun at somebody, saw someone with a gun. But we do not categorize, you know, just not recovering casing or not recovering video as a false alert unless we actually have something to suggest that the sound was not gunfire.
Thank you. Just so that the audience here knows, we have cap-, we have captioning until 4:30, and I said I truly felt that was enough. I invite Council Vice President Chugtai to make some comments, and then if she doesn't, well, we'll do the motions. And just to let everybody know, we have one additional presentation, but it should be fairly short today in committee. Go ahead, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the one thing I was gonna just suggest about this, the proposed expansion map, that's Slide 5 of, of the slide deck, is it'd just be really helpful if you could include in the administrative follow-up, just an explanation of what all of these different things are, right? Like, I heard something about the blue dots signal a, a, a ShotSpotter activation, but then the part where you're proposing the expansion has several blue dots, right? I'm just, because most of the expansion on the, on the, on the west side is in, in, in Ward 10, and it's, that's Whittier and the Wedge. So I'm, I'm trying to reconcile, like, that's where we're putting in the technology, but that's where we already have activations from it. Help, help reconcile that. So if, if that could be included in the administrative follow-up and, and not for right now, so we can get through the rest of our business, that would be really helpful. You know, I think there are several outstanding questions that are really important ones that were asked here, including the, the last one that, that Councilmember Cashman raised around, you know, the density that exists in, in downtown, and how that density makes it an area that can lead to a lot of echoes with, with ShotSpotter technology, where, like, the, the parts of this proposed expansion that, that Councilmember Cashman lives in, I live in, or, or one or both of us represents, also has similar amounts of, of high rises and density. And so just want to make sure that there's, there's some amount of, you know, analysis into why these are, these, these make for places that expansion can happen where downtown doesn't. But with the number of sort of unanswered questions that require a little bit of, of digging and data to, to be compiled, I will move to continue this item a cycle. Madam Chair.
So I think that that's for 20.2 and 20.3, right? We're still gonna receive and file this report. So-
Yes, that's correct.
Let me try to do this in the right order. So let's ask the clerk to please file the first report, and now proceed to consideration of the contract itself, which we added as agenda items 20.2 and 20.3. You know, I really invite evaluation, looking at effectiveness of this technology and how we use it as it moves forward. I'd like to add that as a legislative directive to the mayor's office, such that we do that. And I think we have enough time over the next week and a bit to, to, to put that together. So I was ready to move this forward to council, even if it then gets held in council for additional conversation. But first, Councilmember, Council Vice President Chugtai asks to delay this in committee for one cycle. So that's for items number 20.2 and 20.3. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Ellison.
I'll, I'll second it. But, and I'll also just say, I, I will be supporting this motion. I'm, I was open to voting for this. I think this is a tool that we need, that, you know, moving forward, unless there is an alternative. But I think a delay one cycle to ask some questions, and also for me to get clear on, on, on the, on this, on the length of the, of the contract. I under-, I'm clear on what it is, but I'm interested in talking with staff and my colleagues about what it could be before we take a final vote on it. And so I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. I don't know that we will get the technical questions for ShotSpotter answered in, in the next cycle. I think that might take a little bit longer. I am open to the body as a whole deciding that we want to have more time. I'd like the opportunity to be able to get people set up with the questions that we can have answered, answered, and leave that up to the body to consider at the next council meeting. So I appreciate the need for some extra work, but I think that we have the time to get that done. Is there any other discussion on it? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the legislative directive around evaluation, is that something that you would be proposing, like, during this cycle to bring to Cow?
Yes, I would plan to bring that for everybody to see as soon as it's done, ideally by Cow, and have it for your consideration at the, at this council meeting next Thursday. So a week from Thursday.
A week from Thursday. I mean, I, I'm supportive of this proposal and expansion of this into an area that clearly needs it. I mean, the image on the screen speaks for itself with a red, red bubble. Like, there's been a lot of shootings on Old Grove, there's been shootings on Yale Place, there's been a lot of shootings on, on 19th and, and Nicollet, just in the past two weeks. So I would like us to see an evaluation mechanism set up. And I guess for me, it's like, if it can happen by next Thursday, great. And if it needs two more weeks, great. So I would, I would prefer, you know, hearing us kind of moving together on this. And I don't want to create, like, a split vote on a delay that signals to the community that this isn't important. Like, this is very important, and we want to get this done as soon as possible. But yeah, that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Chugtai, did you have any more?
Ah, okay. Thank you. I'm eager to get this expansion part underway. That's the part that we're, that, that would be the impetus to me to move forward. I don't understand why we would ever want to take data of things like audio files on ShotSpotter away from investigators of gun crimes. So I won't be able to support this. But that is the motion. It has been moved and seconded to delay both of these, 20.2 and 20.3, for one cycle. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Ellison.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Chugtai.
Aye.
Palmas-, Chair Palmasano.
No.
There are three ayes and two noes.
Thank you. So that motion carries, and this item will remain in this committee for, and come back to us on the next cycle's agenda for more conversation and hopefully moving it forward that next cycle.